Yeah.
People and so.
So clearly, we don't have any of those, but I just want to announce we have a quorum of three members of the board. My name is Suzanne Chaffery, and I serve as the chair. This is Ethan Stiles. He serves as the secretary. Lucas, well, Lucas Kowalski is our third member. So this is our full board. And then we have two alternates, David Alberti and Alan Wheelock. So just so, yeah.
Nice meeting you.
Um, no counsel today, so.
And you are, I'm sorry.
I'm Deb Keller with Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors.
I figured it was Merrill. Very good. Did you know John Russo, who worked about 15 years ago?
I missed him.
Did you?
Name around the office.
Yeah, good guy. I still talk with him. Thank you.
I think we have changed it.
Yeah, we did.
So, so anyway, so, um, I guess we're ready to start the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
6:33.
Yep.
Would we, do we need to give any information?
Oh, yes. All right. So let me, let me go and.
Hand it over.
For the record, um, let's see. So when the, this application was filed on, on June 4th, 2025, uh, by JSC Holdings LLC, and, um, we have, we have here, um, a set at large and a set of more manageable plans here, um, that, um, that notices were sent out, um, to the abutters, um, you know, on 6, on 6/18, and the, and the, and the notices were published twice in the Plimpton, Halifax, Kingston Express. The dates, I don't have them available in front of me, but I know they were published. Um, and anyway, so we have met all the statutory requirements for this, uh, this hearing, which we understand is for a special, for a special permit to construct, um, uh, the three, uh, the three commercial buildings on the lot, on the lot identified. And, um, and so with, with that, I think it would be best if we have the applicant's representative present, uh, what they want to do and, uh, what they, and why they need a special permit.
Sure. Um, I have a board. I don't know which is easier. I don't know if you put it up on the screen, here on the screen.
This isn't connecting. It's been doing this last two meetings, so.
Sure, okay.
You could do that, yeah.
So she could hold the.
Yeah, I can just pass the board.
Yeah, that'll work. Thank you.
Perfect.
As stated, my name is Deb Keller with Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors, and property is 77 Spring Street. And we are, as stated, we are looking for a special permit from the zoning board of appeals for, uh, under the zoning bylaw section 7.20, which is in regards to, um, commercial or industrial lots, uh, that result in greater than one acre of impervious. So we've, we have, um, been before planning and conservation as well. And as stated, it is, uh, we're looking to construct three, uh, commercial buildings on the property with associated infrastructure, parking, app access. Let's see if I can get to the site. For the site plan will be off of, um, we've got it marked down as Freedom Trail. I know it's also known as Joe Freitas Way. Cisco is up to our piece. There's a sand and gravel facility to the north of the site, and, um, the access to the sand and gravel is along the westerly side of the property. There's a large, uh, wetland, um, to the east, and there's an inch written stream and cranberry bog, um, to the west of it. And just, just off the page, let's go back to the, we have, um, interchange here with Route 44, and this is Spring Street. So, um, this special permit with the zoning board is, as I stated, for, uh, the fact that we're resulting in greater than, uh, one acre of impervious, we are just over that. What we tried to do was reduce it as much as possible by providing a, our, our fire lane on the east side of the buildings will be gravel, and it has a, um, it's called, uh, gravel pave. It's a structural infrastructure that you can infill with gravel to, uh, hold the structural stability, um, of the gravel way without having to pave it. So we were trying to reduce that number. We just couldn't get it, uh, under the one acre. So, uh, for history of the permitting of the, uh, property thus far, we met with, uh, the planning board for site plan review, went through a full peer review for stormwater and compliance with the site plan review requirements through the planning board. We also needed a special permit from the planning board for, um.
Plan, thanks.
Groundwater recharge. I was trying to think if it was, um, because we're, um, in the groundwater recharge, we are recharging, although we are recharging practically everything on site. We do have some of the shoulder along the, the fringes that is uncontrolled and comes off-site, but other than that, needing peak rates, peak volumes, uh, for the site. So we, we have obtained approval through site plan review and, um, obtained that special permit from planning board. We met with conservation last week, uh, received an order of conditions, uh, for the same layout. The only change between planning board and conservation is we went through the process, I believe, a year or so ago, the wetland resources were, excuse me, um, reviewed and determined with the commission, and they did not go out and evaluate the remaining portion of the stream that's associated with the bog, which we did this time around, and were able to determine that it was not riverfront, which is what it was classified originally. So that was, able to take, take that off the plan, which then eliminated this sort of corner that we had to address with riverfront, which commission was happy with. So we did, actually, I just received the order in the mail today, so we'll be recording that shortly.
It's not on the plan, then? The riverfront used to be shown on the plan as a bit radius.
Correct, correct. Yeah, we, we took it off. So I think the plan set that you have still has river, the riverfront shown, but we did change it, um, just recently.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So an acre is 43,056.
Yes.
How many square feet combined are these buildings?
Each building is seven, uh, 7,424 square feet. Uh, the lot itself is 2.15 acres. So we are, we are utilizing the majority of the site.
Okay. I have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Um, the impervious surfaces are, are the ones to say the north side or northwest side, right? That's all the parking?
Yes.
Todd surfaces?
Yeah. So the driveway comes in, is impervious. This is impervious in between here, and up north is in the parking here, yes. So we have gravel in between these two buildings here. We had to pave this because this was the entry, garage entryways for these two buildings.
I see.
And this was gravel, um, as well.
Okay. That was my question, if that was done for entry between the two?
Yes. And we have a little bit, uh, more width here just to allow, uh, the larger trucks.
Right. Okay. So the other, the third building, the building in the top of the page, doesn't have truck entry?
It does. It would be from this, this side.
Okay, but that's, that's been asphalted?
Yes.
Okay. You couldn't make that into anything impervious?
No.
So would all three buildings have, um, truck entry between the, the thicker, the thicker strip on the bottom and the, uh, and the thick strip on the top?
Yes.
Okay.
So we are, we do have on the utility plan, each, each building, um, will have a, um, industrial holding tank for all of the floor drains that would be required for each overhead door. Uh, no anticipation of any type of, you know, car wash or anything like that is allowed. It's not one of the uses that was, um, granted. So it's commercial, it would be commercial use, contractor base, uh, light manufacturing. Um, the one building, and we anticipate it being the front building, um, would have, a portion of it would have what, what's identified as an indoor commercial recreational facility. I think they're looking at batting cages. So.
At what, sorry?
Batting cages. So it would be for.
Baseball practice.
Baseball practice, yeah.
Yeah. Another one, if I may. Uh, the, the lot looks like it's, it's pretty tight. There's one way in, one way out?
Yes.
And looks like a real hard curb coming in. Has this been looked at by fire department for access?
It has.
Okay, good.
What did they say?
Yeah, good question. I guess, I assumed.
They signed off on the plan. They said it was okay.
All right. Well, let me, let me ask you. In terms of the volume of vehicles coming in and out of this lot from Spring Street, have you had any, uh, any idea of what you can, what you can expect on a regular business day?
Um, I don't think I brought my statement with me. We did do an analysis of a number of, we're anticipating, let's see if I can break down about parking, we require 28. We have 32. Um, from traffic, the.
32 parking spaces?
32 parking spaces total. And we anticipated, uh, a lot of the commercial or contractor yard is going to be limited to one or two employees. So coming in in the morning and going out and then coming back at the evening. So where you have more of a higher volume would be the, the recreational or batting practice, which again, sort of is offset. You know, you'll have a group come in for a couple hours and then leave various times throughout the day. Um, I'm trying to recall, I think it was, uh, we looked at, reviewed, um, the SDOT traffic flows for Spring Street, and the increase in traffic was less than 3%. I apologize. I don't have the numbers, but I.
What were the three uses? Batting is the first?
Yep. So we had indoor commercial recreation, which is the batting, uh, cages, contractor yard, light manufacturing, and warehouse. And my understanding is those are the ones that, uh, JSC Holdings is marketing this to, but he doesn't have anything fully designated yet.
Okay. That's on the, the second two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And there is, um, he, he will have to be fully aware of how he breaks that out and sells it to us of the septic system demands. He has a certain amount of flow that he's allowed. Once he hits that, he can't farther.
I'm, I'm sorry. You're, you're suggesting there's a, a limit based on, based on the septic's ability to, um, to, uh, to work as a system?
Well, so, for example, um, he would not be able, I think the highest demand under septic, let's see, I have it down here, would be for the, uh, the indoor recreational, which is 10 gallons per participant. So they're anticipating 22 participants, which would give you a full team to come in at one time. Um, let's say he wanted to, two batting cages, like, two buildings would be that. So now you've got 44 people. He, he wouldn't, we would have to relook at the septic numbers to make sure that he couldn't do, like, all three with batting, because that would, um, exceed his daily flow.
Okay.
So we need to be cognizant of that as he leases out.
That's, that's a controlling factor then, of parking or traffic, or?
It is, right.
Okay. Very good.
Leave that, that specified in our decision with planning board, because they, we discussed this with them as well, to make sure that we're following this.
So, um, how long would you anticipate it would take to, you know, to clear the land, you know, to pave, uh, to pave whatever you're going to pave and erect these buildings? How long do you anticipate that would take?
Uh, from my experience, if there aren't any true delays, it could be done within a year. But that, that's just me. Um, I, I can see if I can ask, um, Rob and see what his anticipation is for construction to give you a more accurate timeline.
Is this the same owner who's constructing two storage buildings right now on Route 58?
Is that Palmer?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. And he also just bought 10 more acres across the street?
I was, if you tell me that, sure.
Yeah, it's public. It was printed in the paper, so.
Yep.
Was he going to turn Plimpton into a huge storage thing?
I don't know. I don't know anything about that 10-acre parcel.
Yeah.
Where is this 10-acre parcel in relation to what we're.
Right across the street from, he has, he already has a storage facility under construction in Plimpton.
I mean, south of, south of.
It's on Route 58.
Okay. Oh, that's, that's, that's.
Same owner, yeah.
But.
The horse hospital.
In what town?
Plimpton.
Really?
Two large buildings under construction as we speak.
On 58?
Yeah.
Whereabouts on 58?
Right by the hospital, um, at where Maple Street comes in, there's a horse facility. They do horse grooming.
Okay.
Medical. Right next door to them, further north.
Clean, clean, or the clean, horse clean is over there?
No. Do you know where the White House was that was abandoned on Palmer Road, almost to the Halifax line?
Nobody would know that one.
For years.
Oh, that one, yeah. That's the one.
It had land on both sides of the street.
Mm-hmm.
And he bought first one side of 58, and now I just saw its public record. He just bought the other lot on the opposite side where the house sat.
The house is still there.
The house is still there, but it's abandoned, yeah.
Uh, we, we didn't work, Merrill didn't work on either of those properties. I don't.
People can buy what they want.
I'm just, but there's a, there is a pattern. He's investing in Plimpton. It'd be nice to know more about him. Don't you agree?
It's good that somebody is investing.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, bring in tax dollars, I mean.
Well, hopefully, this is an appropriate, it seems like this is a, uh, an appropriate location with the sand and gravel behind it, Cisco and the, the other industrial.
And as far as, as far as we can tell, neither the sand and gravel or Cisco has voiced any objection to this.
We have, actually, I've been to every hearing except for one and have not seen one of Butter.
Because, because I think, you know, because you're sharing a portion of Freedom Trail or Joe Freitas Way, or whatever you want to call it.
Sure.
And, you know, and as far as I recall, I think that's Cisco's only ingress and egress from its, uh, from its facility, from its facility down the road. Um, but, you know, but if they haven't voiced an objection to, um, because obviously, you know, you're, you have to build those, they have to build those things. It's going to take trucks and material and, and some, some time of traffic flow on occasion. Um, and I, and, you know, perhaps less so the, uh, the gravel company, because they have the strip that, that only just touches the, touches the, um, uh, one border of your property. So I, you know, so, but anyway, but as, as I say, you know, we have, we have no knowledge of any objection to this, and we certainly haven't received anything in writing from any concerned of Butter or other, or other resident that, um, suggests opposition to, uh, to this plan. Now, in terms of, um, oper, operations, now, um, you know, sometimes it's come up, you know, what do, you know, what do you intend to do in terms of hours of operation, days of the week, that sort of thing? Is there any inherent or anticipated restriction on, you know, essentially, the idea is that we don't want, you know, you know, that, that residents might not be pleased, you know, distantly, it might sometimes be if they're having big, heavy trucks coming in and out at 2 o'clock in the morning. Um, if they are just coming from 44, they're, you know, the noise and vibrations the dust can, you know, can carry. So have you given any thought to, uh, to limits on operation, on hours and days of operation?
I believe that the planning board, I haven't seen their final decision yet, but we did discuss with them that, um, it would be standard, typical hours of operation. So you wouldn't be seeing trucks coming in at 2:00 AM.
Because I believe that people have complained about Cisco, you know, with number, numbers and frequencies in the past.
Yeah, there's some local residential.
And it's a gigantic facility.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
For Plimpton's road.
I do know that I, I did speak with Rob, and, you know, he would like to have Saturdays, but he, he said Sundays and holidays, obviously, no, no. Typical standard hours of practice or operation.
Mm-hmm. So you were at hearings with Concom, Board of Health?
We have not, we filed with Board of Health. We received comments, and we just submitted a response to comments to them. So hopefully, we should be.
Don't worry. Okay. And the fire department as well, you said you.
We didn't meet with them specifically, but it's my understanding, we got fire trucks for circulation to them, and they had no further comments. They just wanted us to show that we could circulate the fire truck around the building.
What, they brought a fire truck to the site?
No, no, no. They, they gave us a template of the fire truck, Plimpton fire truck.
Oh, you could scale it through the.
Yeah. We use auto terms. We modeled the fire truck making all of the terms.
Do you know if the buildings are sprinkled or not? I'm sorry.
They, they are not right now proposed to be sprinkled, so they're below the, just below the 7,500, which is.
I see.
Square feet, which is the requirement.
Very good.
There is a private well there. Our proposal, obviously, private well.
Mm-hmm. Board of Health will need that, yeah. Thank you.
Now, um, now I see here on the, on the plans for the building, you mark that each building has five bays.
Yes.
Are those bays, could they be completely separate as though you could have, like, five separate tenants in each building?
That, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Or you could have someone buy two bays, three bays.
Right. But it can be configured so that each bay can be its own separate?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm sorry. Just keep hitting that.
So in terms of the, the, I was going to say, but the batting cages, that's just a speculation of something it could be used for.
Could be, right.
You don't have anybody.
My understanding is he was speaking with someone, but, um, nothing was set in stone. Because I kept bugging him for details, because I wanted to be able to try to define what that would be. And we were also talking, you know, would they take three days, would they only do two, you know? So I think all of that, once he has a, um, honest, I guess, or a committed, a commitment, then we, we evaluate and make sure that, um, all the design parameters and.
Because you're building it to sell, or they're building it to sell. So is it going to be like condos? I mean, how does that work?
My understanding is they'd be leased.
They'd be leased. So he would own the property and need to lease out the space?
That's, that's my understanding at this point.
I mean, you can configure them so you have office condos and association for, you know, for that, but, you know, obviously, you just, you know, that's just one possibility. But, yeah, you could, you know, you could, yeah, you could easily lease these, and you could have 15, up to 15 units to, uh, you know, I mean, and you could also do, as you say, you know, light industrial, you know, small office, you know, whatever the demand is, that doesn't require an extra permit or simply a private it is.
Yeah. I was just curious how that worked, you know?
That's what I've been told thus far. I can't guarantee that percent, but.
Yeah. Excuse me. These aren't office fronts and garage rear. It's, there's no real, um, blast entry with windows and, look, they're pretty closed then.
Yeah. And so one of the things that we talked about with the planning board, um, you know, in particular, because the building is very utilitarian, um, we were working to enhance, um, the, the vegetation and buffer between, uh, Joe Freitas Way and along with the, the driveway for the rear property area, um, to try to keep that buffer.
So that, that was with planning board?
Mm-hmm.
Did they?
Part of the planning set.
Right.
Yeah.
And they approved a planting plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Did that in, I'm curious, because it's happened before where the planting plan is approved, the building sites, uh, finished out, and then the planting, plantings aren't maintained such that when they die, they say, well, we adhere to the planting plan, and then they don't water, rejuvenate, replace?
Yeah.
Uh, that, that could be an issue, but that's up to the planning board. Thank you.
Yeah, I haven't, um, I know the decision is with the town clerk. I don't know if they feel period, so I haven't officially seen their conditions, but.
Uh, and this, this is a, a mock-up of the type of buildings you're proposing to build, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it has a, looks like this, is, is the roof flat or is it like a gentle slope?
It has a gentle slope.
Okay.
Yep. And I think the planning board actually have, uh, special condition, picked out two of the colors that are on the next color palette that they did not like. So he could pick from it, and I think they didn't like this one, and I honestly.
They can choose the colors they want?
Yeah.
They could suggest.
They picked two that they said they would prefer not to be.
They could paint it purple if they want, in that way.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
That's what it comes down to, unfortunately.
I can understand some of these more earthier, lighter tones might be difficult to see from the, from the air or something.
It was, it was just their general preference, but they didn't, there were two that they really didn't like, and.
Now, I, I don't know whether this might be, uh, might be an issue or not, but has there been any suggestion of, you know, because, because there is the, um, the sand and gravel pit in the back, has there been any suggestion of using these bays as storage for whatever they, you know, mine or, or remove? Or is that just completely separate, just a neighbor?
That is just a neighbor.
Okay.
I, I do believe he was the previous owner who owned the property, but this, my, I have never had a discussion of storing anything, uh, on property from, from the sand and gravel. And I believe there are conditions in planning board, or it might have been conservation, but, uh, getting hazardous waste on site.
Mm-hmm.
Because, because of the groundwater concerns here.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, as, I've, I've read it, I've read it briefly, but, um, you know, you know, because I noticed that today, as you, as you pointed out, that, um, that the, that the planning board is a, is itself a special, a special permit granting authority for another aspect of, of this project under the bylaws. So, so we have to focus on our own, um, you know, our own, um, you know, ambeh, or purview, which is a different section of the bylaws. And I think, you know, if, if, if we're pretty much, you know, we've gone through the presentation, and if we pretty much go through the, we've pretty much asked the questions we need to ask if the applicant's representative, then I would suggest that we should take a look at the, at what the bylaw says and talk about its application to this particular, uh, application.
That would be great. I'd like to hear it.
Which is a very redundant sentence.
No, because I'm thinking, why they even have to come before us if they're getting food already?
We're going to hear, but we've got to see.
Unfortunately, I, I didn't find, you know, the, there wasn't, there's supposed to be a book with bylaws.
Where did you get this from?
Okay.
I still have to go.
It was part of the application.
It took us a while to kind of sort out the special permits, um, and we're having a discussion.
Well, this came in, special permit. These are the applications, and these are the site plans and the architectural plan.
The planning board.
As soon, as soon as it came in.
Filing board.
Yeah.
Then it expired. They gave us a link.
Bylaw, one says the planning board is the grant, a special permit granting authority, and the other section, the other requirement.
Is what does it mean?
So she said, she was referring to.
So it's different than when they have to.
Section 7.2.
Two.
Yes.
Because it's a special.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's variance. We're not.
Yeah, I know. I just.
That's industrial park.
So much.
If we get variance, it's far more often.
307.2.
We usually miss.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll get another camera.
All right. So let me just find the section here.
Yeah, industrial use, right.
Let's see. What's, what's the section that she needs?
The section is.
Do they have it?
Yes.
Is, um, section 7.20?
Oh. Oh, 7.20.
No, way down.
What was it?
No, O, letter O.
Letter O.
An alphabetical list, Dave.
All right. Okay. So, all right, here it is, all right. All right. So, um, so, all right. So section 7.2 is uses authorized by special permit, has a bunch of letter, um.
Yeah, then we just go to O.
Um, bunch of letter uses, and we're looking at, no, we're looking at letter O, and I'll read it. Um, let's see if I can find it here. O, and I'll read it. Let's see if I can find it again.
Discharges.
Okay. Oh, industrial district. Any establishment which discharges into the ground, groundwater containing chemical substances not normally present in domestic wastewater or maintains an impervious area in excess of one acre shall require a special permit. Now, obviously, we're not talking about this for the first part of that, because-
That is correct.
I expect that would act, that would actually be a much more well-attended hearing.
Except for the wastewater, but that's going into a septic. And that's a closed system or a leaching?
Leaching.
Is it? Okay.
A closed system would be a tank, right? That they'd have to pump out?
Yeah, a closed tank.
Okay.
And there's, there'd be waste containers there, I would imagine, small dumpsters.
Yes. So we have, we've shown dumpsters up in the suburb northeast corner of the site. They're proposed to be fenced and enclosed.
Okay.
So how many square feet over one acre are you?
No. I was looking for that earlier. I want to say we are like fifty-two thousand.
Versus forty-three, five sixty.
Yeah, I know, it wasn't that much.
So it's not that much.
No, it isn't.
Indeed, this almost does have similarities to a variance hearing.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But they don't have to meet the three?
No, they don't have to meet the three.
No, not in this case.
Yeah.
All right. So, yeah, is it, they're slightly above-
Dave had a question. Go ahead, Dave.
No, go ahead, Dave.
Just had one more question about the planting plan up front. It looks as if the, as you go there now, you'll see a row of pine trees that may be sixty or eighty feet tall. They'll be gone.
We're trying to keep, there is some vegetation that's within the right of way that we'll retain. So we'll really be behind there when we clear inside the site. So there might be a few that we can keep.
It doesn't show existing plantings on that then?
No, they just did a tree buffer. Then the property goes all the way to almost where the bend is.
Where the bend is, right.
So that will be stayed all natural and with a buffer there.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
All right. So, so the ultimate goal is, you know, nature cooperating is to have, you know, a line of trees and vegetation that sort of shield us from the road?
Correct.
So it's not as you're, when you're driving by Spring Street, all you see is these three big steel buildings?
Buildings, right.
Okay. All right. Well, if no one else, else has any questions, I think we should come to the question, come to the questions, as it seems to be, as I understand, a fairly simple one.
Yeah.
Is that, that, that the applicant has, has requested the special permit as they're required to. They've gone through, you know, they've gone through the, the conservation commission, they have the order conditions, they have their special permit from the, from the planning board, which I, I read that, I read that briefly, but I, but it does also seem to be not too far from what we're, what we're being decided to do, except they, except they have the site plan and we don't. You know, special, you know, that, you know, site review, and we don't. So, so I would suggest that unless anyone has an objection, that I think we could vote on this, vote whether to grant or deny a special permit now.
Sounds good to me. Any other questions or any dialogue we need to have? So, all in favor?
Okay, all right. So I suppose, let's do, let's do this for-
Satisfy the question.
All right. Let me make a formal motion. All right. So, okay. The motion before, before the board is, you know, should we, should we grant the special permit under, under section-
Seven.
Three hundred dash seven point two, paragraph O, to authorize the special, the special permit requested, namely, a, namely, the construction of the three, the three buildings that were in a pervious area of more than one acre. And that is the question, and I, and I move that the, that a vote be taken on, on whether to grant the special permit.
A second.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I believe the permits, permits will be granted, and we'll, we'll go and, you know, write up a decision and, and so that you'll have it, and you can, and then you can go and go with whatever else you need to do to oversee this project.
Right.
All right.
And then we have to meet and sign. I don't know when Lucas is leaving. When do you leave, Lucas?
The beginning of August, so I can probably, the fifth is going to be-
Well, actually, why, you know, since we're meeting on the twenty-ninth for, for the other project, we know-
Could we meet that first?
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely meet that out. So we update the agenda and say that we'll be, that we'll be voting to review and, and-
Confirm the note.
Confirm the decision, you know, issue the written decision, and, you know, that's, and then they can be on their way.
Okay. Because I just was thinking, if Lucas wasn't going to be here, if we needed one of these guys to vote, so.
Oh, yeah. All right, that's the twenty-ninth, and, and of course, you're welcome to come if you wish, Ms. Keller, but you're not required to. But anyway, we'll get that opinion, that decision approved, and, and that will issue your permit.
Nine three oh three.
I appreciate very much.
All right. Thank you.
That comes up as a valid connection.
Thanks for your presentation.
And I can click on it, it comes in. But it hasn't done it the last two meetings. I'll go see someone tomorrow. He'll fix it.
Do they have somebody?
I get the ladder, I go up there, I pull the plug on, on the top of the unit and plug it back in, and it cycles. And it's fine.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thanks.
Take care.
Yes. The check, I, I did see, I did see in the office, so I'll pair the-
Because, yeah, Dave said you would know.
Yeah. So we do, so the check, the check, I've seen the check, so I will have a, you know, I'll come by tomorrow, hopefully, and get a deposit of a special fifty-three G account.
Cool. The check did come.
Pardon me?
The check is here.
Oh, the check is in the mail? No, it's, the check is in the bank, right?
Well, it's on the way to the bank.
Well, that's where it gets interrupted, hopefully, if not.
So do we need to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.
And officially adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, I think so. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Seven oh eight, seven oh nine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, right. All right, so.